The bewitching hour is here, six o'clock. Meeting come to order. I guess we have a roll call. Do we call the roll for the joint meetings?
Yes, we do, Mr. Mayor.
For you experienced guys, okay.
Mayor Johnston.
Checking the tradition.
Mayor Johnston.
Here.
Mayor Protem Wyrick.
Here.
Councilmember Blatts.
Here.
Councilmember Francina.
President.
Councilmember Haney.
Was that Councilmember Haney?
Haney.
He is here.
I saw him earlier.
Chair McCrady.
I don't think he's here.
Here.
Vice Chair Aitkins.
Here.
Commissioner Quinn.
She's out.
Okay. Commissioner Convery.
Here.
Commissioner James. Commissioner Hill.
Here.
Commissioner Lewis.
But Lewis isn't a commissioner.
Oh.
He's a museum rep.
Oh, my apologies.
That's why I was wondering why you had to go 700.
That's my error, my apologies.
Well, it's on the left. It's a museum rep.
Okay, thank you, Gail. Let's... Will you join me in a pledge?
My pledge is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Steve, is there...are there any presentations? Are there any presentations?
No, Mr. Mayor, there are no presentations.
Okay. Discussion item number one, update of the historic preservation ordinance, Title IV, Chapter VIII. How shall we proceed? Do we have a...
Ms. Wald will be giving a brief staff report.
Yes, good evening, everyone. So, before you tonight is the product that from returning back at the direction of the city council to the HPC commission to take the term sheet for the ordinance update and bifurcate it and take both one for the landmarking process and the second one for the sites of merit. We did take that back and they've talked about it. And the product you find in your staff report, the term sheets are those comments that have been incorporated in that came from the HPC commission. So with that, we're returning tonight to hope that we can get some additional direction for how you would like staff to proceed. In particular, we'd like to take them separately and hopefully get direction on the two different term sheets so that staff can proceed with developing an ordinance and bringing it back to the body where council directs us. And that's kind of in a brief staff report.
Thank you. Darwin, how would you...you have any preference on how we proceed on this?
I'm going to leave that to you. I have no preference, Mayor.
Okay. I guess we can just kind of go through, and I guess you term the term sheet.
Correct. And so I guess the idea would be whether we want to go by point by point. Is that how you'd like to go through the term sheets?
Well, I get not necessarily point by point.
Okay.
But I went through and had a few questions and had some comments I wanted to make.
Excellent.
I assume that there may be others in the room that want to do the same.
Okay.
So I would jump to the...this is just to kind of announce my biases. When I ran for office, I made water the number one priority, but I was also concerned with openness and service orientation. This isn't directed specifically at this commission, but just in general as a philosophy. And where there are five of us on the council, and yet I...the amount of paper that is generated, the number of reports that are generated from all the commissions and the committees, and the number of vacancies that we have, it just...I know this is not an original idea with me. It's been brought up before, but we do have a vacancy on this particular one that's just come up. And I'm going to suggest to the council that they consider the idea through attrition to have the commissions and committees the same size as the city council, if for no other reason than to reduce some of the workload on staff and to reduce the number of times we have to recruit to fill vacancies and get quorums and things of that sort. If you've never been in the administrator's chair, you think if you go from five to six, you've, you know, increased 20 percent. And if you go from five to seven, it's 40 percent. But that's really not true. It's almost exponential, the way in which the amount that has to be moved through the administration going from five to seven. Five to seven down in the city of Ventura, they have a charter city and they have seven on their council. The amount of work getting those meetings ready is substantially greater. So unless there's a really strong argument in favor of retaining larger commissions, I'm going to encourage the council to, through attrition, to sort of pull in the reins a little. So I just thought I should say that publicly early so that it doesn't surprise anybody and maybe nobody will agree with that, but you heard it from me first. Okay. Can we comment on that? Certainly.
When we have, in our case, a seven-member commission, we can process a given amount of work. And if we reduce the commission to five, we can't produce as much work. And what that...the end result is, we're going to be going a lot slower on these things and builders and homeowners are going to be delayed significantly during that period of time. So it's something to consider, the end result. Do you want us to go in a quicker, more efficient way, or do you want us to pull it in with the five commissioners?
Well, as we explore it and all of you...
Yeah, but that was just the one thing that I had.
Right, yeah. And as I get educated, I may change my position. I think intuitively, having more commissioners, to me, would maybe slow the process, or at least it increases the load on staff and the staff slows the process. But that may not be true.
So this came up in last year's meeting. It was discussion in the commissions briefly, then it came up to the city council. The city council said, well, we really need to find out what the commissions want, you know, what their druthers are. We talked about it in our commission actually two different times. And I believe in the Historic Preservation Commission that we settled on seven, again with the same call-out that's mentioned, four residents and three non-members, three non-residents. And part of it was the fact that with the seven people, you get a wider variety of skills, talents, and interests rather than narrowing in opinions to a degree. I don't know...I mean, you've done this longer than I have in creating more work, but that kind of, in our cases, sometimes depends on the individual that's on the commission rather than the number of people on the commission. So again, our feeling in the vote that we took was that we stay at seven and we stay with the current split on four and three. And again, that's what we were charged to by the city council to come back with that recommendation.
Mm-hmm. That's...
I actually think we are doing more work, getting it done quicker and not generating more work. We're not making motions to, you know, come up with new ideas and do different things. We do bring different skill sets. And from out of county and in the city, it really helps to have a variety of opinions. I think we've been working really quickly to get through this, particularly the code sections. So it is...I can see your point that mathematically it makes sense, that more people generate more work. But in the case of a seven-person commission in Ojai, I actually think it moves it faster because there are more voices to bring in more information at the table in the moment, if you will.
Yeah, that certainly may be true. The general feeling amongst the population that talked to me both during the campaign and even since I have been in office has given me stories that, now, they may not be entirely accurate, but the stories are, a year goes by on projects and I'm thinking, that's not really fast. Now, I'm not saying on your group, but I'm just saying that we have a lot of stuff that seems to be around for a year, two years. Seven can generate a lot more ideas than one or two people on staff who are at the other end catching it. I mean, it's just, it's a fact of life. We can all think up more things and talk about more things a lot faster than we can do more things. So anyway, I just wanted to say that, not that we're going to decide anything tonight or that I may not change my mind, but I didn't want to sit here as we went past that acting like, you know, I agreed with it and then suddenly after we leave your presence that I start talking real tough into the mirror and telling staff what...okay.
I'm going to own up to be one of the people that did bring this up a year ago and...so I mean, I'm just saying, I'm not...I don't want you dangling out there alone because we have others of us that have thought about it. And part of the issue is just five people versus seven, you know, there's an inherent presumption that may not be true. And that's why we asked for commission opinions. But there's inherent presumption of fewer people, fewer deliberation...less deliberation time, just because, you know, it just seems to work that way. But that was sort of motivation for my just throwing the idea out there to discuss originally.
Darwin, did you...
Yep. Just one more comment, as long as it's on the table. Mayor Protem Wyrick and I actually brought this before the council and sent it to the commissions for their input last year because we felt if the council could operate with five, it seemed as though our commissions could operate with five. And there was a lot of pushback by not only the commissions but the public hearings about reducing it to five. And at the time, there was also an issue of not being able to do it through attrition because if you were going to wait until two people were gone, you were going to have opportunities where you couldn't come up with a quorum. So it was very important that if it was going to go to five, it would go to five and if that meant removing someone from the commission, that it would have to be removed. And one of the commissions, and I think it was the planning commission, was in exactly that situation where because of the absences and because of the vacancies, they couldn't hold meetings because they didn't have a quorum.
And also recusals.
Right, and recusals. So I was in favor of really looking at it. I still am not opposed to it. It's just that we did fully vent that through even a public hearing, I believe. If not, it was a public discussion and there was the overwhelming feeling that we got as the council that it should stay at seven.
Okay. Darwin?
I was just going to say that when we have these conversations about this particular thing, it almost seems to dovetail with the residency requirement for serving on the commissions and our, I think, well, let me speak for myself. I think that's sort of a false argument. I mean, the Ojai Unified School District has schools that are well outside the boundaries of the city and so why shouldn't the commissions be populated by people who are, you know, in the valley larger? So I think that needs to be talked about at the same time.
Right. But the school district is a larger jurisdiction and we could become a larger jurisdiction except that most people prefer not to join us, except on Tuesday nights to express their opinions. But I understand the point you're making. Okay, yeah, right.
Just one final point on the four and three. Currently, we have openings on three different commission, one on each commission. Current...last ad that went out a week ago Friday said for the HPC was that it was open to residents of Ojai for the HPC. Currently, we only have two non-residents. Those residents happen to be your chair and your vice chair, by the way, of the HPC community. And so I questioned that. Also, the Parkson Rec only has one non-resident on it. It said city of Ojai residents. So there was the inference in the...also enlisted on the city website that there's kind of maybe something changing or a lack of maybe awareness that it is open to, because there's open...non-resident openings on the Parkson Rec and on the HPC, that perhaps you're not out there recruiting all that you could be recruiting, so.
I'm not familiar with the process yet as to how these things get announced. I just get told when it's time to interview. But again, in full disclosure, I find it kind of interesting that we even have a conversation about resident, non-resident. It seems to me that priorities should go to residents who live here and are part of the city in the jurisdiction that's being governed. On the other hand, if you need special skills and have people outside the city that can help and you have vacancies, I don't see a problem with doing it. But I know this is not a, at least in my mind, not an entitlement. It's just a matter of practicality that most jurisdictions, you do have to be a resident. And most jurisdictions, much larger than ours, have five-person commissions. So either we're not doing something right someplace. The thing that is concerning me, and again, I'm saying this maybe for the...this is being broadcast to the folks watching at home during their dinner hour, is it's hard to get the message out to people as to what's going on. But my phone, the emails, and I assume this is true of other council people, the number of inquiries we get, and a lot of them are concerned about process and timing. And so we've got to figure out what's causing the delays. Is it our systems? Is it our training? Or is it that we're shoveling so fast that no matter how good you are as a staff person, you can't handle the kind of workload that's coming in? When I look at some of these agendas, I do see things where it says, let's...a recommendation to discuss. And then to, I think in one of them, I think your last meeting, about crafting the language for a landmark monument, which is fairly standard in California. And then it's, after it's discussed, it's to go to staff and then to be brought back for approval. I get notes in the email about things in the planning area, about director's exemption or whatever the terminology is, where theoretically we have delegated the responsibilities for certain things. And yet the city council, it's almost like sending a lawsuit that's being filed to the Supreme Court first, saying, do any of you guys have a problem or you people have a problem with that up there? And then it works its way back down and if there is a problem, it gets appealed back to the people who commented to begin with. I'm just here to say that we need to work on that because, you know, I don't care how hard you work, if your system is in that kind of disarray for whatever reasons. And the people that are here, I know this goes back years, so there's an inheritance of a lot of this. But usually, whatever is there when you arrive, you accept as a given and then you add to it. And sometimes it gets better and sometimes it gets worse. So I see my role as sort of the burr under the saddle a little bit. I'll try not to be offensive about it, but I think we should think about it because I come down fairly regularly to, you know, I don't talk to the staff so much as bug poor Mr. McCleary, who's got all kinds of other things to do. And it's mostly questions about things where people can't seem to either answer the questions correctly, you know, for our staff, or they have to go to commissions and have to be reviewed and then they go in a circle and then they get reviewed. You know, I may be just talking to myself on this, but now is a good time to start mentioning it. This is my second month in office and it's only a two-year term. So if we figure percentage-wise, it's, you know, time to start discussing some of these things. And what concerns me most is that we're headed towards, you know, the budget preparation and we need to be looking seriously at a lot of these things because the peacetime economic expansion does not go on forever. And when it contracts, there'll be some really hard decisions to make. So just like planning for our water, I think that looking at the way we administer things also could be helpful. So, okay, we're going to run out of time if we...and I'll be around to talk to you individually if you'd like to persuade me.
Just a point of information, the ordinance is up to on the non-resident.
Absolutely. I've read it extensively. That's why I pay attention to the ads too, so they're correct.
Mayor Johnston?
Yeah.
Usually, you kind of seated, pulled over the discussion. You just want us to pipe up when we have a question?
About the ordinance review?
Yeah.
Go ahead.
You have first.
Darwin's and...
You have first.
I have to confess, I was not...I didn't attend our last HPC meeting, so I don't know what was covered in the review that you all had. Did you chair last one?
I did, but we didn't cover the terms. That was covered in the meeting before that. The last commission meeting, we talked about the language for the landmark. We asked staff for guidance on that. Again, we...to Mayor Johnson's, we operate at the direction of the staff, so. And then the other thing was that we were talking about the landmarking on the Smith-Hobson House, which then ended up on our agenda today.
I think one of the issues that, you know, drove the reopening of the discussion of the...the language and the design of the ordinance was that council felt that some of the ordinances were unclear about what was covered on each...in each ordinance for each landmark. And so those are...that's what's driving a lot of the discussion and the comments that HPC has directed back at you all. So that would be my overall comment.
I want to zone in on one particular aspect of Part One, not Part Two, the application of language, because I think you're absolutely right. There was a need to clarify language and ambiguity and issues. But a philosophical issue that I want to zone in on is Attachment A 1-13, proposed change of allowing an applicant to withdraw a landmark or historic designation nomination application before the public hearing starts. And I just want to raise the issue to make...the current code obviously is different. It allows a landmarking of a property ultimately over the objections of the property. That is a possibility in our current code. And this would eliminate that, basically may give a property owner...huh?
I'm sorry to interrupt. The language that, at least at the term sheet, it wouldn't eliminate the ability of the city if an applicant withdrew an application for a landmark, the city could still proceed to landmark it over their objection.
Doesn't say that.
This language would not...
Doesn't say that.
We can clarify that, but that's how I read it.
It says allow the applicant to withdraw a landmark.
Right, but the applicant can withdraw the application, the city could then force it anyway.
Force it, okay, okay.
Over their objection with notice and an opportunity.
I appreciate that clarification, because when I read that, I was assuming that it meant what it said, which was that the only nomination process was through the property owner. That's not the case.
Correct.
Okay.
The language speaks to the application process sought by an applicant, but it does nothing to prohibit the city from doing it over objection.
Okay, thank you.
Of a property owner.
Appreciate that clarification, because I was just skimming through this.
And just for my education, does the city identify and force landmarks on property owners?
Have not historically, but it is allowed in the code.
That's correct. The city has never exercised that power, but it remains within the council's power. Yeah, that's part of the municipal code, not the HPC guidelines, so.
It's just, it's in the code.
And is there compensation for whatever limitations have been placed on them?
That might be discussed later on in sites of merits, right?
Yeah.
I don't know. I just wanted to raise the issue. It's a kind of a...it's come up in the past. I just want to understand exactly what was being proposed. So I apologize for not having a clear understanding.
If the council directs that we move forward with the draft ordinance, we can certainly add a sentence that makes that very clear, because you may not be the only one who read it initially that way.
It's probably me.
Also, while we're citing this, can we cite who's ever speaking, cite the page that we're on so that we can get to it and just follow it easier?
Thought I did.
Then you said 1-13, yes?
Yeah.
It's all right.
Okay.
But in general, I mean, I think it's very...you know, a lot of these issues have come up from experience and need to be clarified. But that's what you're responding to, is ambiguities and debates that could not be resolved by the code. And it's good if we can resolve these debates with the language of the code. And that's a great, great approach. I appreciate that.
Can I comment to that? A lot of this is being brought forth because of what happened with the NEF lounge, where we, you know, spent quite a bit of time and then were called in on an emergency meeting. We met together with the joint session with the planning commission. We voted, both the HPC and the planning voted unanimously to decline them making adjustments to the NEF lounge. Their attorneys flown in from Chicago then went through...my son's an attorney, remember that? Went through and basically looked at some of the vagaries of our code and essentially picked it apart. And so the direction from the council was for the HPC to go back to form an ad hoc committee, which was Terry Hill, Rose Boggs, and Craig Walker, and to come back with how to tighten up the...that part of the code. And so it was that, that experience that...and that guidelines from the council who initiated us making some of the changes that have been recommended by the ad hoc committee and then reviewed by the HPC numerous times and the term sheet put together by Matt Summers.
So do I understand, is this addressing what Bill brought up about the withdrawing or the applicant not being in favor of a landmark?
Pretty much a separate issue.
Oh, okay.
This would be after landmarked is the clarification of how to do.
In the case of the NEF lounge, was that something that people other than the owners of the inn decided that was important to preserve and the inn fought them on it? Is that why there were Chicago attorneys in town?
The other way around.
The other way around is what?
The HPC and Planning Commission met and the HPC voted unanimously against approving the permit, the Planning Commission.
Approving it, but that means...
Voted unanimously against approving the commit. They then appealed it to the city council and they flew their attorneys in.
So there already was a permit on it?
It was already landmarked.
Oh, I see, okay.
And they were asking for a permit. And the HPC and Planning Commission felt one way and the city council felt another in the end.
Okay. But the inn had designated it as a landmark and then changed their mind?
No, it had already been designated. It still is designated as a landmark.
But they then altered it. You're just saying that the alterations were not...
They wanted to alter.
Okay, got it.
They wanted to alter.
Yeah.
They wanted to do a...yeah, an alteration. Let's just be neutral about it.
One of the, one of the issues with the inn in that whole scenario, the inn claimed they didn't even know that it was a landmark. And yet the landmark plaque was hanging right on the building. And they just dismissed the HPC and what we had done in landmarking the whole situation. They just dismissed it. We were kind of a frivolous entity that was in their way.
Okay, so landmarks used to be where property owners actually pursued a landmark and then in return got some sort of special benefit.
And, Mr. Mayor, that's the case most of the time.
Right.
I think it would be highly unusual for our commission or the city to pursue landmark status over the objections of property owner. I think those discussions would have taken place much prior to that.
So this was a case where they had a landmark, didn't object to the landmark, and then decided not to live up to the standards of the landmark? Is that...
Yes, and with our newest landmark, number 22, I think is the Aliso Adobe. And one of the reasons it took so long to process the landmarking of that in our commission, we were being so careful to get the language right, to represent exactly what we were landmarking and exactly what we weren't landmarking. So some of these recommendations are already kind of taking place.
Mr. Mayor?
Brian's referring to is that the...there was an issue of whether or not the work that the inn wanted to do to the NEF lounge fit within certain definitions of what they could do based on the fact that it was a landmark. The HPC and the Planning Commission both said no. It was then appealed to the city council. And at the city council, we had a full hearing de novo on it. They brought in attorneys. And as...at the end result of that, the city council said it believed that it fit within the purviews of what they could do and the work went forward. But it was in that process that the attorneys for the inn went through the code and found ambiguity after ambiguity. So the council after that, after hearing of these ambiguities, directed the HPC to go back and look at it to try to resolve that.
Right. If you want to control it, you got to be more specific of that, the idea. Okay, very good.
Could I raise another issue? Is that all right?
It's okay with me, how about you, Darwin?
I'd like to hear just a short, help me, you know, educate me. We...right at the beginning here is adopt the Secretary of Interior's standards for the treatment of historic properties, the city's guiding principles for reviewing historic properties. It isn't now. That's page 1-3, Attachment A 1 of 27, excuse me. And obviously, I guess there's arguments both ways in terms of having that in there as the guiding principles and then the way it is now, which is not. Is there...what are the major issues involved in adopting or not adopting those principles?
I think it...gosh, I hope I'm not mistaken, but I think it is in the charter of the Historic Preservation Commission that we follow the guidelines set by...
Okay, I'm wondering why it's in here as a proposed change, then.
I hope I'm not mistaken. Maybe I'm mistaken.
I can speak to that. It wasn't in there before. It's not in the code. However, it is in the HPC, what Darwin just mentioned, the HPC regulations. But it's not in the code book, adopt the interior.
Right, so that's a difference.
So to put it in the code makes it, you know, more official. It's in two places. And I think we also need to address adopting California historic... adopting California Historic Code, because that's, the California Historic Building Code is different than the building code. It's more lenient toward retaining historic elements that don't meet current code standards, things like that. And that's really what preservation is about. It's about following the historic building code standards.
Well, that's what I'm trying to get at in terms of the pros and cons of putting, of adding these things to the code.
Well, we went through, we went through the code section, sentence by sentence, two meetings ago, I believe. And that was a primary addition, because that really gives directive to what the building code should be doing with historic property. It should be going to the state of California, going to the interior, and going to the National Trust for their direction.
Ms. Wall, did you have a comment?
Well, I was just going to say exactly what Ms. Convery said, is that I think the idea of putting it in here was to give some, to use standards that already exist that are working well in the, in other communities in the state of California. You know, we had training. They came down and they offered training to the HPC after the NEF. And so this is kind of, using these standards helps us to kind of leverage off of what other communities are doing, what the state's doing, without us having to reinvent the will every single time it comes to HPC. And putting these in here just helps people understand, it provides expectations for the community, people that might become landmarks.
Does that mean as as the Secretary of Interior Standards would change, that our code would automatically change?
Well, I don't, they're guiding principles is what they are, because, you know, it changes depending on what you're doing to a landmark, you know, whether, depending on the integrity of the landmark, whether you're rehabbing, restoring, I mean, there's a number of different things. So, but I see Matt's at the mic.
It seems to be stimulating Mr. Summers.
Yes, I know, always.
Mayor, Chair, pardon the intrusion again. I think to add to Ms. Wall's comments, the council could choose to adopt the standards as they are and adopt them as they read today, or the council could choose to adopt them as they change.
Yes.
It would be a choice matter. And then at some point, if you choose to adopt them as they change, I'd recommend putting a tickler on the council's to-do list to look at it in some number of years to say, is this still what we want, to not let it run for 30 years without further review?
I'd also like to stipulate when we do that, that we put before NEF and after NEF. So we can put NEF to bed. But I do remember, Brian, if I remember correctly, Craig and I and you, but we had discussed this about adopting these state standards, because one of the discussions we had previously at council is you were looking at your own standards and there were state guidelines. And I just felt that we should be working under one set of guidelines. That was my remembrance of this, and I'm happy that you guys decided to do it, so.
Yeah, that makes sense to try to have a standard.
And if I might, I'll answer the first question. Mayor Potem Wirick asked about the withdrawing. Do you remember that came about after, with the twice sold tails?
Yes, I do.
And so I can just elaborate a little bit on that, that the issue of twice sold tails was that they volunteered to landmark, and then in the middle of the process, they realized it was going to send them back to HPC when they were trying to move forward and get the project underway.
Right.
And so council and their wisdom, they wanted to withdraw. They said, you know, they said, I like that, well, Ms. Wall, what can we do? And I said, well, you can withdraw. And then it upset everybody, because I said withdraw and apply later after you're sort of done. And then in your wisdom, the city council decided to, what do we call it, to make the landmark come retro later, you know? So it came in October, even though the, it came before you earlier on. So that's how you dealt with, instead of ask, instead of allowing them to withdraw. But there was this issue about whether they could withdraw or not. So the idea was to put it in the code, so it's very clear that a person has the right to change their mind. If they get in the middle of it and they see it to be burdensome, they can withdraw.
I have one more question. I'm interested in what Ms. Convery talked about regarding the construction aspects of these landmarked. And I'd like to see you, the HPC commission, come back with that paperwork or that definition, and so that we might look at it and see how it's affected by Title 24 or affected by the other building codes that we have, so that we do remove that conflict. I think it's important that.
Are you talking about the California Historic Building Code?
Yeah, well-
Which is a building code.
Yes.
Big.
So you're going to have, you're going to have one set of building codes, and what you were just talking about is another, maybe a lighter definition or, or of remodeling?
No. It's, the California Historic Building Code applies to historic buildings. You apply for a building permit to do a roof, oh, I have a historic property. Let's refer back to the Historic Building Code and see if it affects what I'm doing to my roof. It's a next step to look into that.
And what I was just talking about was Title 24, the new updated-
What is Title 24? Explain.
Energy compliance.
It's the new building code.
It's the building code for the state of California.
Yes. So, so if you're pulling a permit and there are certain aspects of whatever you're doing, that you're going to have to comply with those. What I'm trying, what I'm asking for, because you brought it up, and I think it's a great point, how do those, how do we remove the conflict in those two, or does one supersede one?
Correct. There's no conflict. So it's, as you're saying, is that if you're a landmark property, you have the right to exercise your right to use the historic, the California Historic Code. But everyone doesn't-
The Historic Building Code trumps the 24.
For landmark properties. And it's as, so the example would be if you're putting on a roof and the, and the community has, or in the code it says you can't have a Class C roof, which is a, you know, shingle or shake roof. But that's part of your, the ambiance or the landmarking part of the, you're allowed to put it back on. So it's, that's a very simple kind of basic example. But yes, somebody would come in, say to the building official, I'm a landmark property, I want to exercise that code. Then they would find the code that allows them to put on that type of roof. It's as simple as that.
It's a very good example.
Thank you.
One of the things that, and I'm speaking to your contention, Councilman Haney, is that there's a delay and there's kind of a runaround. And the people that apply for the, the permit, they're unaware of these things, and they have to go through the process. And then they discover after they have gone through the, the cost of the permits and the process itself, that there's an alternative way to do it. There are brochures that can be given out at the desk. So when somebody comes in and they say, I have an historic building, I want to apply for this, you hand them the brochure so that they can explore what the ramifications are for building a roof and et cetera. And I think that would alleviate a lot of this delay in it.
Could that be put under something like landmark rights and responsibilities? You know what I'm saying? Because, because again, if you're saying that you have the right to defer to another set of-
It's automatic.
-codes, someone needs to know that. Well-
Yeah.
What's interesting is some people don't know that.
Yeah. I think that there's a lot of people out there that are ignorant of the, the whole process, and they're doing it for the first time.
Okay, guys, I'm going to have to rein it in a little bit. We're going to run out of time. The, we do have, Steve, did you want to comment on this? I didn't take public comment, this isn't a hearing, but I had a note from you.
I wanted to talk to, excuse me, I wanted to talk to the-
Mark, please, thank you.
Thank you, Mary Johnston, and greetings to all the council members and commissioners. I wanted to offer some comments on the very paper that you're looking at right now, Attachment A. And so if that's appropriate, I'll do it. It seems to me you might want to discuss it among yourselves first, but I'm happy to-
Okay, I just didn't want to ignore you.
I'm happy to chime in, but I-
Yeah, okay. If you're willing to wait a bit, we're, we got 20 minutes, so I didn't want you not to have-
If I get squeezed out, it's because there's more important things going on around the table, and I take no offense.
Okay, you're a gentleman. Thank you. Okay, we're back to the discussion. Terry, were you done with your comment?
I, yeah, I think just that extra step and to have available, there are brochures on the Historic Building Code. And we've seen those when we went to Los Angeles to visit with the Historic Preservation Office for the City of Los Angeles. And they gave us copies of those. And it would be a question to just phoning up, phoning them up and find the brochures.
Okay.
Because they're not like documents.
Staff will pursue that, yeah.
Mr. Mayor, I just have a question, and it may relate to what you said earlier about it seeming like there's a lot of work being done, and then all of a sudden, the gears are shifted. But when somebody comes in and applies for a permit, isn't it incumbent upon staff to know that, whether it's a historic building or not? Wouldn't you know that?
And we do, always check.
Then how would it go down the road of a regular building permit?
It doesn't. We've not had, we've never had that happen here.
Okay.
That I can recall. I mean, the landmarks that, first of all, if you're going to do work on a landmark, we have to, we have a list of them. We have to pull the landmark file. We have to know what was landmarked. And often it requires a work permit and it goes in front of the HPC. Repair and maintenance is different. So if somebody was doing something like for like, we, we make them bring it in and show us that it's like for like. Often, I can't think of any major remodel or, or change to a building that's been landmarked that, that the HPC hasn't seen. And those people, we, we counsel them. I mean, I could just say, like the Libby House, I mean, Mr. Shumshuri is very aware of what he's entitled to. He's been in front of all these bodies at one time or another. I think what's, what's more difficult is the, is the house that's not, or the commercial property that's not landmarked that comes in, but it's, but it's got potential to be landmarked and comes in. That's more where the confusion has been with the city for many months and years. But as far as the landmarking, most certainly, these people, most houses that are landmarked also has, have a Mills Act, and they're very, very well aware. But I will tell you that it's just like, like your home, for instance, Ms. Commissioner Convery's house, that she did her extensive remodel before she landmarked, and then you landmarked, isn't that how it was done?
Did it before.
Yeah. And that's, that's, that's more common, you see.
I, I just misunderstood what Commissioner Hill had said. It sounded to me, Terry, that you were saying that people would come in, get down the road with a regular permit, and this brochure might help them know that, that they shouldn't go that route. They ought to take the route of the historic building.
Can I speak to that, please?
Yeah.
I think if, what you're talking about doesn't really apply, because if they're applying for a permit to do thus and such to the house, you know, redo the foundation and whatnot, it's, they're told from development that that's a historic property and you're allowed to check the historic building codes. The contractor should know about that. There are excellent contractors in Ojai who do know these codes. Chris Wilson, for instance. We were really lucky for 30 years because we had Brian Meadows as the building inspector. And that's why Ojai looks like Ojai and not like Thousand Oaks, in my opinion. I worked with him for years. He knew historic buildings, and he told owner, building owners what they should do to keep it the way it was. So we had Brian Meadows covering the bases for 30 years. In the last two weeks, I've had three calls from people who are thinking about doing things to historic homes, just calling me up for advice, you know, because I'm on the HPC. So there is that communication. It's a small enough town to keep that happening. And I think Mayor Johnson, you know, having a meeting like this televised and letting residents know that we're here to talk to them and not berate them and cram codes down their throats, you know, helps.
Okay, I guess we have answered Randy's question. Is there any kind of confusion or conflict between the Uniform Building Code and the Historic? And apparently it's coordinated pretty well. And Terry's made a suggestion to staff, you can get some brochures and have them on the counter if there's anybody who needs it. Should we move a little further through this? We have less than, about 15 minutes left. The one question I have, and again, it's education, what this, what's it called, Sites of Merit? I mean, is that a halfway step to becoming a landmark, or is that, it seems like-
Those are, those are, those are, those 37 Sites of Merit are buildings that our commission has identified as having historic significance, but they're not landmarked. And so the two buildings that we are looking to landmark now, that the city has paid for the Historic Resources report on, are this building that we're in and the Chaparral School, for instance. And so those are both on our Historic Sites of Merit. So you could say that we would look to that list for our future landmarks.
The reason I just raised the question, and we, I won't belabor it tonight, I have had some pushback or some concern from citizens who got caught up in being somehow designated that way and didn't know, and is trying to cooperate. But again, the workload being what it is, it's gone on for quite a long period of time. And so I guess my bias is, is that we not encumber people's property without due process of the hearing and the designation. And I didn't know if this was sort of a limbo kind of designation.
Well, it actually is. The Historic Sites of Merit don't have enhanced protection at all.
Well, let's be clear, though. There's never been any council action to adopt the Sites of Merit list.
And yet people are being held up by staff, aren't they not?
Can I speak to that?
Is it, so I just, I'm sorry.
Just a second. Brian, and then we'll go to you.
Okay, so I actually, Councilman Blatz is looking at it. I actually printed the 37 Sites of Merit, historical sites of merit that, of course, I got off the city council website.
The council never adopted that list.
Let me, let me finish. So-
And it's not on the website any longer.
Bill, through the chair.
So again, the Historic Sites of Merit was something that was done with council direction. It's twice been presented to the council in, in open meetings as, and it was done in asking if you had a wish list on what might be possible ability for landmark going forward. 37 Sites of Merit were-
That's not what the record shows.
Okay.
37 Sites of Merit were identified, again-
Yeah, I heard you, Brian. I heard you, Brian and Bill, please, guys. I only raised the question, and obviously there are questions. And so outside this meeting, we should pursue to clear up whatever misunderstanding we have. And if we have a misunderstanding, I'm sure the public does. So we need to clarify it for them. I have a two-page letter from one citizen who has been over a year trying to repair his front door, so.
Mr. Summerton?
Thank you, Mayor Potem.
I'm sorry, I just wanted to make sure you knew he was-
I was going to wait for him to finish the sentence.
Yeah, right.
I just missed you.
Ignore Bill, would you, man?
Ignore me.
Okay, now that you've ignored him, go ahead, man.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a brief comment to state some points quite directly. The current code provides for sites of merit if they are recommended by the Historic Preservation and adopted as such by the city council. None of the sites on that list, none of those 37, have been formally adopted by the city council as sites of merit. As such, there are no council-designated sites of merit subject to the current text in the code. Further, the current text in the code does not provide for any rules, even if there were designated sites of merit. None exist. There are no rules for them. That said, the commission under current law retains the power to recommend of the council adoption of sites of merit. The council retains the power to adopt a site of merit, or all of them, or some of them. And if that is done under current law, there would still be no further rules. What the ad hoc committee had proposed to the council and commissioned to consider would be adopting, changing that rule and adopting a set of requirements to impose upon sites of merit, which would only apply if adopted by the council, and would only further apply if the council acted to adopt some or all properties as specific sites of merit. Those two steps would have to happen before these, the Sites of Merit list would have any direct bearing on what property owners could and could not do with their properties. Those two steps are on your table now and have not happened yet. Thank you.
Thank you. So we don't need to debate each issue. I, my understanding of the meeting was, was to communicate areas of concern or mutual agreement, and we now have 10 minutes to get through them.
Can I just make a quick clarification?
If it's not a debate, Brian, you can't.
It's not a debate at all.
Yeah.
Okay, so, so we have the 37 Sites of Merit. As Matthew just said, we have taken no affirmative action on any of these. We have, when they did the presentations, at one time, we tried to contact the people just so, and so they could hear what was going on. Again, nothing was imposed on them. It's, it's a list. There has been some confusion, because again, I saw the HPC demeaned in the city council meeting and then demeaned in the HPC meeting that we were causing all kinds of harm and detriment to a, an individual who was trying to make adjustments to his house. And the clarification was that it had nothing to do with the HPC. That person's house isn't on the 37 Sites of Merit. It was an action that was taken by the, by staff, because it is on another survey that was taken by the city some years ago that included that house.
Okay, well, that's a good point. If there's more than one survey, and I'll be talking with the city manager and get my-
And that survey was not adopted either by council.
Again, but it's not an HPC meeting.
Okay, very good. That's, what else do we have? If we, if we don't have anything else, we can come back to this. Anybody else have anything that they wanted to?
I just want to comment. I've watched a number of the meetings. I feel that our, the members of our Historic Preservation Commission are extremely competent. What I would like to know is, we have just a few minutes, what would you like to see us do tonight? Because we only have so much time. Because we only have so much time.
Can I answer on my part?
Yes, directed at you, the head of the commission.
Thank you, Council. So there were some questions that came up, and our attorney Summers was at a conference up north on that meeting, and so there were some, some key questions, and this came up in the council, when the council decided to, was there is, in the changes, it talks about a definition of major and minor work permits. That's totally still confused. So I think what, on my part, and what I, coming to you was, you know, maybe some guidance, some, you know, Matt can bring that up, but again, that came up in the city council meeting, what's major and minor work permits? Major has to go to the HPC, minor can go to the Community Development Director. The other big discussion that we had two months ago, even amidst our council, because again, we have two members of our HPC that have landmarked properties, or own landmarked properties, was sightlines. And that's a big discussion, is it a sightline from the public right of way, or a sightline from the landmark itself? And, you know, that comes down to the definition, so again, that was a question, unresolved question that was at that meeting that night. And again, it gets back to, you know, the decision on what should come before the Historic Preservation Commission, rather than just going to the Community Development Director. Because we, and key to note here, there are, to the Historic Sites of Merit are this building and the Twice Told Tales, who have just done a fabulous job in recreating the Maravilla Real Estate Office. That was on the Historic Sites of Merit, it's now moving towards a landmark status, or it is a landmark status, we're just trying to get the language right. So, and, you know, and just little things like, we don't think the owners should pay for their permits, nor for the installation of the plaque.
Yeah.
You know, they're, they're kind of doing a service for, so it's just, you know, some of those are big things that, you know, we need guidance, because we're trying not to overstep our bounds, but we're trying to firm it up.
Mayor Johnson, I had a question, just...
Thank you. Could I finish answering Suze's question, please? Suze asked a question, I wanted to finish.
Yeah, I just wanted to interject one thing.
Oh, sorry.
And that's just on the, I just, because I read this a number of times, who's going, who's going to bring the permit definition between the major and minor? Does the state have guidelines? So who creates these guidelines, that what is a major repair and what's a minor repair?
So that...
Major just exterior, and minor's interior, or, because it sure seems like that, a major could be inside, and minor could be outside, so...
Yeah, well...
Who creates that definition?
In the interest of time, which is running out, I think that is something that the staff and the commission should work on, and if we have, I think it's a good idea. I mean, it sounds like you're trying to be service-oriented to the people that are being impacted by the law. So as one member of the council, I support that. I don't know how you do it, and we're not going to be able to do it tonight, but Randy, you make a good point, it does need to be clarified.
And I'd like to...
Oh, Suze, when you asked what you'd like to see tonight, one of the things I think is really important to preserve the look of Ojai is to not add on additional building permit fees for historic properties. It's hard enough to maintain them, they're very expensive, the materials and all that, and a lot of the comments and additions in the code revisions were about another historic fee, and another landmark fee, and another Mills Act fee, which doubled in the last, you know, I don't know how many years, but it's a hardship. And this, there's a fallacy about the Mills Act providing tax relief. The guy that owns the Libby House, you know, he spends probably a hundred grand a year just painting the thing, and he saves twenty in taxes, so it doesn't add up. You know, that's, I don't know if that's an exact example, but I think the permits are, really should be waived for historic properties, people are doing a good service for the town. Thank you, thanks.
Darwin?
And to answer your question, Councilwoman Francina?
Yes.
Of what we would like, and what I've been saying as Chair for a long time, and I'm glad we talked about the Historic Sites of Merit list, is we would like to add a layer of protection for those, that was the point of creating that list. But having said that, that layer of protection might only be that they, an owner of a building that was on the Historic Sites of Merit, if they wanted to do an alteration, or an addition, or remodel, or whatever, would have to come before HPC. That would be the extent of that layer of protection. That's one thing we would like to see.
Thank you.
Terry?
To add on to what Darwin said, and you were speaking of the Sites of Merit list, right? Right. The issue came up because we were losing houses, and all you had to do is apply for a demolition permit, if you get that. There was no rate review, no historic protection for these houses. We were concerned about that, and so the commission, under the direction that Craig Walker, put together a beautiful show, and he trotted that show around to the Board of Realtors, it, just whoever wanted to see that, he was ready to go and show it, and he showed it to the city council. And I think that we've had enough of a turnover, that you need to see that and see the list of houses, the great houses that have, that have been in Ojai, they're gone. And we wish, we cry when we think about the loss of those important buildings.
That's what his presentation is?
Well, it, some of the, it shows the thirty-seven, and then it shows the ones that...
Were lost.
Were lost.
Okay.
And it puts a, puts it into a perspective.
Okay, I, one, one last question, I'll take advantage of being the chair. You have one thing, it says proposed, this is on page, Attachment A, page seven to twenty-seven at the top, it says eliminates the ten-day notice requirement. Does, does that, is that a benefit to the property owner, or is that a benefit to, what, speeding up the process for the commission? I wasn't clear on what that meant.
Ten-day notice requirement for what?
It says, public hearings, to hold public hearings for the purpose of identifying historical landmarks or points of historical interest, with such hearings held ten days or more after the property owner was notified, and it, and it says, this eliminate, if I read this correctly, proposed change eliminates ten-day notice requirement.
Mr. Mayor, happy to comment.
If you can clarify it.
Yes.
Attachment A, page six.
It's, Attachment A, page seven, twenty-seven, also known as page one dash nine at the top, item C. This was done, proposed to eliminate a duplicate requirement, public hearings in another portion of the code required ten days' notice, that it was an oversight to not point out the, the other reference.
Okay, fine, that clears it up, thank you. Okay, I guess we have come to the end of our time, we've got a council meeting in two minutes, so, thank you very much for your attendance and your participation.